Okay, you're good.
All right, in accordance with RSA 9, or good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 19th, 2020 Barrington meeting of the Select Board. In accordance with RSA 91A emergency provisions as the Vice Chair of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. But there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which has authorized, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate to the meeting. By phone can be accomplished by dialing 1603-664-0240 and entering conference ID 676-749-973. Pound sign. By video, there is a link that is B I T dot L Y slash B A R R S B. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams, phone or video. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Town of Barrington at W W W. barrington.n h.gov. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anybody has any problems, please dial 603-644-0146 or email at administration@barrington.n h.gov. Adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. What is meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence? Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the RSA right to know. Select person, air.
Daniel La, 334 Old Conker Turnpike. I'm in my office, it's locked. There's no one in with my vote.
Select person Bailey.
19 Chesley Drive. I'm in my office. There's nobody here to influence my vote. My wife and cat are downstairs enjoying television.
Select person Secoshia.
Secoshia, 21 James Henry Drive. I'm home alone with my dogs.
And I am select person Andrew Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. I am in the office by myself, but my wife, my son and our dog are also present in the house.
Select person Hardikoff, and I am 48 Stone Farm Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. I am home with my dog, son, husband, and no one will influence my vote. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome Tracy.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I was having a Wi-Fi connectivity issue, which quite frankly doesn't happen often, so it was unusual. First on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing for the issuance of a, oh, actually, point of order if I could. Select Board members, just so that I am not being excessively rude as you're speaking, if you will mouse over and use your little hand designation to tell me that you would like to speak, and I will have everyone speak in the order in which those little hands go up, and then leave the hand on until you're done speaking. Oftentimes people pause and I think that we're done with a portion of the meeting and we're not done. So if you would turn off your hands when you're done speaking, that would be helpful too. Just, I think from a remote perspective, it will help us communicate better. So first up is a public hearing for the issuance of a building permit on Crossley Road, a private road for Casey Landry Fillion and Scott Fillion. I hope I pronounced that right. Map 106 lot 15. Connor.
Adam Chair, you're only half faced on the, on the camera. Thank you so much.
Now I can't, I can't see myself. I hope I look okay.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
So you have a copy of the routing sheet in the backup information. This, as requested by the board, we also included some additional information at the bottom indicating that the zoning board wasn't needed in some of the additional approvals. You know, it is important that there are steps after the building permit is issued that are handled by the building office. But certainly if the board would like some of that information, we're happy to make it available. I've summarized the requirements as requested by department heads in my report, one through eight, that the, that the side across Crossley Road, across the frontage of the property should be built up a few inches, regrade the section of Crossley Road, which is disturbed as a result of construction activities. Root the driveway runoff around the front of the leach field and into the woods around the right side of the house. Place and maintain erosion control until vegetation is established. Homeowners are urged to join the road association if they haven't done so already. Clear the westbound site distance at the intersection across the road and Washington Street. Clear brush back on both sides across the road from Washington Street to driveway. Keep the mouth of the driveway wide enough for a truck to turn around.
Okay. Any questions, comments or concerns, Select Board members? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you, Mentor. I want to thank Connor for covering all the issues that I had written down and concerns I had from the letters from the department heads, and I want to thank them for doing a good job on it. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment? Seeing as there's no other comment, would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the issuance of the building permit?
Just public comment, Chair Hardikoff.
I saw, I saw Andy Knapp's hand go up.
Yep, I was just going to make the motion, but I'll let public comment happen first.
Anyone who would like to make public comment in reference to this public hearing, you have 30 seconds to notify us by either mousing over your screen. You'll see a small hand. You can click on that and it will alert the town administrator that you'd like to speak. Your other option in order to comment, and again, we'll give it 30 seconds when I'm done saying this, you can dial 664-0146, is that correct Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so, and for those of you who are connecting with us virtually, but using just your phones, if you do not call, if you cannot use that hand signal, you can unmute your phones by pressing star six and then alert us that you would like to speak, and I will give it 30 seconds.
I see nothing coming through on my end, Chair Hardikoff.
Okay, with three seconds, two and one. Seeing as there's no public comment, do I have a motion from the board?
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a building permit at Crossley Road, a private road for map 106 lot 15. Also noting that all recommendations made from department heads are observed.
Okay. And do I have a second on that?
I have a second from George Bailey.
And could I please have a roll call vote on the issuance of the building permit, beginning with Select Person Air Eyes? Air Eye, thank you.
Bailey Eye. Secoshia Eye.
Knapp and Secoshia Eye, Hardikoff Eye as well, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a public hearing on the acceptance of the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant in the amount of $5,000. Connor?
Yes, this is a $5,000 grant opportunity for assisting with election related expenses. Again, adding to a long list of available grant opportunities stemming from COVID relief funds. So interested in pursuing this and need the board pursuant to RSA 21 dash P colon 43 to ask for public comment and then consider accepting the, accepting expending up to $5,000 subjects to the terms and allow me to sign accompanying documents.
Very good. 30 seconds for public comment in reference to this public hearing, beginning now. Again, you can use your hand on your screen. You can call 664-0146. You can press star six if you're joining us just by phone to unmute your phone and let us know that you'd like to speak. You have 14 seconds left. Nothing coming through Connor?
No ma'am.
Okay. Seeing as there was no portion of public comment during that public hearing, is there a board member who would like to make a motion? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Center for Tech and Civic Life.
And do I have a second? Yeah. So I have a second from Select Person Air. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Air, please?
Air Eye.
Bailey Eye.
Knapp Eye.
Secoshia Eye.
And Hardikoff Eye, the motion carries. Thank you all. We have a series of appointments, many of which I, I think will move relatively quickly.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Would you please close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't need to, yep, that closes our public hearing on the issuance of the building permit and the acceptance of the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. Moving on to appointments at this time, we have a raffle permit request from W 45 N and for veterans counts. Any comments, concerns from the Select Board? George, I have your hand up. Do you wish to speak at all?
I will make the motion for acceptance, Madam Chair.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, very good. And Jim, I saw your hand flash over. Did you want to speak or should I move?
I was going to give you the second.
Okay, so we have a second. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Air?
Air Eye.
Bailey Eye.
Knapp Eye.
Secoshia Eye.
Hardikoff Eye, motion carries. Next up is a raffle permit request for the Barrington Snowgoers Group. And Select Board is being asked to consider authorizing the issuance of a raffle permit. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
No, and I have Andy.
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Secoshia seconds, roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Air, please.
Air Eye.
Bailey Eye.
Knapp Eye.
Secoshia Eye.
Hardikoff Eye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the Transfer Station Budget Presentation by Erin Paradise. Erin, you're on. You need to unmute yourself if you could. Thank you.
Yep, I'm going to.
While Erin's pulling that up, I'll just point the community and board's attention in the budget binder, which is available online at barrington.n h.gov/2021budget. This is section 14. Direct link is included in the town administrator report, and you can also find the Advisory Budget Committee comments attached to my report as well.
Thank you.
So Connor, can you, can you see it?
Yes, yep, it's perfect.
All right. So, good evening.
Good evening Erin.
Hello.
So for my fun fact, for the Town of Barrington that we were asked to do to, for our budgets is the fact about the Two Mile Streak, which everybody's seen, they have to have seen the sign passing on 125 at some point. So the town was originally made up of two land grants, that the first containing Stratford and present day Barrington, and the second covering a parcel two miles wide and six miles wa, long called New Boston or Two Mile Streak. So a little bit of history, in return for donations, the Town of Portsmouth made to Harvard College in 1669. The General Court of Massachusetts in 1672 granted the town land for a village. Portsmouth didn't apply for the grant until 1719 after discoveries of iron ore in parts of New Hampshire. Wealthy town merchants wanted to build on iron works on the Lampray River for manufacturing, but first they wanted to track, a track of land that would furnish fuel and where they could settle some of their laborers. They were granted a two mile wide slip of land at the head of the Dover Line, also known as the Two Mile Slip. The merchants never developed the iron works and didn't need to settle workmen in the slip. At town meeting in 1722, the voters supporting, dividing the village of New Portsmouth among the residents of Portsmouth. The Two Mile Streak became part of Barrington when it was incorporated in 1722, but settlement was slow because of rocky soil. The first settlements of the Town of Barrington, and I'm sorry because I have like the tab right here, so it's blocking my thing, were between 1732 and 1740. So by 1810, Barrington had 3,564 residents, and as we know, to date, we're almost at 9,000 residents, which then at the time was the state's third largest town with its primary industry, iron ore smelting. The Eisenhower River, along with its tributaries, provided water power for grists and sawmills. In 1820, Stratford was set off from Barrington because of lengthy travel required to attend town meetings, then reducing the size of Barrington by half.
That was interesting.
So I've, just to point out some of the lines that decreased, I'm not going to go line item by line item. Though my lines that decreased by 10% were obviously the full time hourly wages, and that reflects the position being reevaluated and made into a part time position, so decreasing it $39,458. Again, with this transition to a part time position, the earned time buyout could be reduced from 800 to 200 since most of the employees that do get earned time use it rather than cashing it out. And then the other line that reflects the reduction to the part time position is the employee benefits line, and this is bringing it down to $7,136. The lines that increased by 10% were obviously the part time hourly wages because we just shifted some of the money into that line, so that increased it from reducing the full time to a part time position to 74,000. And then the increase for the landfill monitoring actually came from reducing our rental line. We used to do a porta potty for the transfer station, but there is just no need for it. So I just kind of shifted that money over to this line. I don't know if that's a technical term, Connor, sorry.
Perfectly.
And then the other line was the monitoring wells, and I apologize because I didn't really explain what the landfill monitoring is. This line reflects our membership dues for the Lampray Regional. It's something that we will continually be in because we took part of the Lampray Regional Cooperative Program. So it's something, and this year it was new that they split it into two portions. They have a, they did a closer, closure budget fee. So it also increased instead of the normal like 1,300, it's now about $3,000, three and change, I believe. And then monitoring wells is a little bit different, and it's from us keeping tabs on the wells in the vicinity of the closed landfill. So each year I've kind of added what it's done in 2017. It fluctuates year to year, but this is obviously an ongoing monitoring service that we're going to have required by DES for the groundwater around the cap landfill. So to date, just to get you guys an idea, we are, we have been very busy at the transfer station, partly I think because a lot of people had time to be at home, do their spring cleaning for the last six to seven to eight months. I feel like nothing has slowed down for us at the transfer station. So obviously that was an influx of material coming in. So to date, along with outside bag sales, we're about 181,000 for the transfer station. And that, the revenue for the 137,000 includes the bulk and electronic, everything that we have fees for at the transfer station. This is just a fun chart. I like to show you guys that each year how we keep increasing our tonnage rates for MSW single stream and demo, and as you can see that the 2020 totals are up to date to just to September. And if you look at where we are in September versus a full year in 2019, you can kind of see where we're going to end with three months left. Yeah, we're, we're going to be cresting well over 1,000 tons of MSW. And again, it's just one, we're getting bigger, and I think a lot of people didn't realize, you know, with everybody being home, you know, they've, stuff that usually gets thrown out at businesses or schools, it's now being residential and, you know, people are accruing more waste. So that's just something I like to show you guys. So some of the stuff that I like to point out that we've done at the transfer station this year is New, excuse me, New Hampshire the Beautiful has a sign program through the NRA, which it's like a point system, and each sign is a certain amount of points. If it be 10 or 12 and I forget the total, I can't go over, I think it's like 50. So I'm able to acquire the signs, bless you, at the NRA through the point system, and you know, it, part of our idea and our objective was to get it more cohesive and, you know, the signs to look the same. So this year I was able to get some more signs, which are, you know, obviously by the tire container, the electronics, out by the glass, and then the thank you for recycling is on the outside of the gate. So next year I definitely will be looking at obtaining more signs so we can fill in the last of the areas that we have to, you know, have signage. One of the big things that has kind of been neglected for a long time, and I apologize because the sign, the pictures don't really do it justice of really what has been done, but there was a large amount of overgrowth along the fence. It was growing in the fence and doing some damage. So I had a company come in and they did an absolutely wonderful job on clearing it and making it a little bit more presentable. I mean, I get we're a transfer station, but we don't have to look dumpy. So again, just letting people know, as our town population grows, so does the amount of household trash, and we are trying to encourage residents to reduce their household trash by either thinking about what they're purchasing, you know, not buying such disposable items, composting at home, looking for different outlets for items. So, you know, we really encourage residents to take a second look at what they are purchasing and what they're disposing of. Again, here's more signage that we've put up. We started a non-recyclable wall of shame, which has actually come in handy because they like to call them wishful recyclable recyclers who think that they can recycle everything. Unfortunately nowadays, businesses aren't on the same page as municipalities or transfer stations because they're putting the chasing arrows or the recyclable, excuse me, symbols on packaging that, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be taking. So it's confusing to consumers. So I think this gives a more visual impact to some of the residents. I mean, don't get me wrong, we're still picking some stuff out and still having to talk to residents, but we did get the Smart Recycling Guide blown up. So if you've been at the transfer station, they're on both pillars as you walk down to the single stream compactor, just to, you know, really be in their face, which I think has been really effective, definitely having more signage for the residents. Again, here's just an example of the Smart Recycling Guide and a common myth, I know I share this, I have for the last couple of years, is that the recycling arrows or a number on it doesn't mean it's necessarily recyclable. So I encourage residents to ask questions. There is a recycle smart.org website that we often refer people to, you know, it's, it's a great way to search something and it'll tell you what to do with it, but for the most effective information, and this goes for everything, contact the department, you know, we have, or when you're at the transfer station, talk to the attendants. Everybody is more than happy to answer any questions that anybody has. So when in doubt, throw it out. And then if you want a grownups to recycle, just tell their kids the importance of recycling and they'll be all over it. So, thank you.
Thank you Erin. Do we have Steve, the head of the Advisory Budget Committee on the phone or on video?
Yes.
Great. Steve, if you're out there, you may have to press star six to unmute your phone.
I see him there. I just don't see that he's unmuting himself.
Steve, if you're on the call, we need you to press star six in order to unmute yourself.
Chair Hardikoff, if you'd like, I can just give a quick overview from the minutes of the Budget Committee meeting?
Yep, that would be fine, and I can speak to the notes I took as well if, but if we have meeting minutes, that would be great.
Awesome. So the meeting minutes were attached to my town administrator report and printed copies were in the Select Board packets. So the, the first item in reserve related to the transfer station was a discussion about bulky waste. This is an area that the town's been paying attention to because the revenues have historically not offset, directly offset the costs, although that has turned around this year. So there was a question about the trend in how much bulky waste we'd collected. Erin, if you have your responses in front of you, would you like to, to share information on that?
Connor, this is Steve Saunders.
Oh, great. Hey Steve.
Hi, the star six wasn't working for me, so I kept trying it and now it finally worked. So I'm here.
Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you for starting to step in for me because I did have a few questions here. Erin, that was, I appreciate your presentation, and if you would look at our minutes, we did have a few questions for more details, and we were hoping that either you could cover them now or give them to us through a memo later and respond to them. They have to do with a suggestion that you might want to increase the contracts and waste management line. The other thing is we were looking for a reduction in the bulky waste line or an explanation of why it needed to be kept at its level that you have. We also had a question.
Steve, I don't want to, I don't mean to cut you off Steve, but you, you have a response to those questions in your email, and Erin, I think if it would be beneficial to the group, Erin can give a quick rundown of her responses now if it sounds. Erin can give a quick rundown of her responses now if it sounds like that's what you'd like to hear.
I think it would be helpful.
Great. So Erin, if you just want to kind of give a, a quick rundown of the answers to the questions from the ABC?
So to one of the, I guess, the questions of the trend in bulky waste. And I'm, I don't know if I was confused on that, but I, my response is, so it was, the question was, would like to ask for a trend in bulky waste to approve the increase in bulky waste. And my response was, we have been seeing a gradual increase in bulky waste or demo, as we call. Last year, we had approximately five hundred and fifty-seven tons come to the transfer station. And this year, we're looking at approximately over six hundred tons. So definitely, obviously with more residents, we're going to have more material. But that seems to be the trend for the last several years is just, it keeps going up. So another question was posed on if a transfer station lead attendant was hired. And yes, we hired a gentleman who is a local resident. His name is Dan Peavy, and his first day was this Saturday. Let's see, the group discussed the updated fee schedule for the highway and what waste management will be charging. So the 2021 rates for MSW, demo, recycling and the glass hauling will be a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. The tonnage for MSW and demo will be seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. And the glass tonnage will be thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. And I wasn't sure, Tracy, with this posing a question regarding the COVID pandemic, if they think the bulky waste cost will increase. I said our prices with waste management will only go up yearly with our contract.
I think you indicated that we're seeing increases though, based on COVID, correct?
Yes, okay, so that's why I wasn't sure. You meant in general, not prices, like, yes. But I don't know if that will typically be the case. You know, again, it's what I thought we would have kind of been on the other end of this. We really haven't. We've kind of plateaued. You know, we're still getting a large amount of bulk material because people are still cleaning out. And, you know, we're still seeing a lot of dehumidifiers, ACs and refrigerators come through, NTVs. So they're buying new stuff and doing a lot of home improvements. So the, the next question was contracts from changing it from a hundred and five thousand to a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. I support the decision to increase this line after running the numbers with the new hauling and tonnage rates. With approximate numbers, it will be closer to a hundred and seven thousand. And the change would put the department in a better position next year. The group consensus is that they asked to reduce the budget line from seventy-two thousand five hundred to seventy thousand for bulky demo. And my response, again, by using approximate numbers with the new hauling and tonnage rates for next year, we are looking at approximately seventy-one thousand for this line. And I would recommend not going below seventy-two thousand five hundred. Why the increase of fifteen hundred for, and I apologize because I don't have the exact, four, three, four, three is the monitoring wells and the additional information. There was an error with the numbers and at one point, the monitoring well speeds was coming out of two different lines. We were taking them out of the landfill monitoring and the monitoring. But as I added them together, again, you can see how inconsistent it is year to year. And we don't have control of that. It's when they are doing the monitoring and they do it for certain periods of time. And I can absolutely find out more information. And, you know, again, the balances are inconsistent and I don't know, you know, I feel comfortable if we just raised it to three thousand. I don't, you know, that's what my response was. The building maintenance, they would like to know what this money is used for and if it's going to fund the trailer. No, this would not fund the trailer. And this line is used to make repairs around and inside the buildings and the convex containers. We own all three of them that are stationed at the transfer station. This also covers the quarterly monitoring fee for the panic alarm. And year to date, we've expended five thousand dollars. And I believe that the year, the year end needs to be updated on my part. The equipment maintenance, this line is used for the propane for the forklift, the annual preventative maintenance on all, on three of the compactors. We own two MSW compactors and one single stream compactor. And this also includes the annual maintenance for our forklift, which is twenty-six years old, as well as any repairs that would be needed to done on said machines. Year to date expenditures need to be updated with that. I had at the time gotten a quote of some repairs that needed to be done on the forklift. And so year to date, let me look. We are at five thousand seven hundred with that quote. I have it scheduled to be done, the work to be done. It needs, some pistons need to be fixed and some other items on the forklift. Recycling would not be opposed to any increase to this line since the cost varies from load to load. But using approximate numbers with the new hauling rates and approximate tonnage done on the higher side, we could possibly expect to spend sixty thousand dollars next year.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I'm sorry I hadn't seen that in, in my emails. And that was very thorough. So I noticed that Dan's on, and I don't know if he has any follow-up questions that he'd like to ask?
Doesn't seem like it.
Okay, Dan Ayer, you had a question or comment?
Yes, it's come to my attention. We don't regulate who brings trash into our town and stuff. So that could be, well, convenience for people, neighboring towns. Because we have a cheaper rate on our bulk stuff. So it's come to my attention, other people use it at transfer station. And then on, on the forklift, do we have to get that inspected every six months or every year?
It's not inspected, but I have it, we have it serviced every year.
Right, well, some, some companies, when you have employees, you have to get certified.
I'm looking at getting, having somebody come in and getting whoever, if it's everybody, to get them certified on the forklift training.
Erin, do you want to respond to select person Ayer's comment about monitoring who's coming to the transfer station and the work that the transfer station committee is currently doing?
What we have been doing, because I will be truthful. I know that the transfer station stickers kind of fell to the wayside for many years. And that has definitely been implemented and more questions have been asked. Currently, the review committee, we just agreed on updating because we're basically on the last, I, I wouldn't say, partial roll of transfer station stickers that I, I don't even know when they were purchased. You know, so we were looking at getting new transfer station stickers and a better location to have it. And then rolling out the first of the year, again, with all the other changes that we have going on for the transfer station with the acceptance of credit cards, the new user fees and, you know, now the implementation of these transfer station stickers, which, you know, they have to show proof of residency. You know, I'm actively encouraging the residents, if they do see a vehicle with out of state plates that they do ask that they're bearing to resident, you know, I'll be honest. You know, my dad utilizes the transfer station, but he has his work car from, and it has Massachusetts plates. You know what I mean? But they do know him at the facility. So we are actively, you know, I don't want to say challenging people, but, you know, I think that definitely the handle on people, you know, and I would hope that you don't know these people or if you've just heard of them that are trying to either sneak into the transfer station and use it or, you know, you know, because I think for the most part, everybody's doing a very good job with doing this. Unfortunately, we cannot, we can't limit the access to the bags on the outside sales. So, you know, the ones that are sold at Market Basket or at, you know, and obviously, we're not going to stop anybody necessarily that doesn't have, you know, if their trash isn't in Barrington trash bags, we would definitely stop them. But if it's in trash bags, that's not really a warning sign for us. It's more when they come up and, you know, for bulk items. So is that more so where you think is lacking, Dan, is with the bulk items and stuff that you have to pay for?
Right. I've got a couple of comments from people. I have not physically, I like to check in things personally, make it valuable. I have no proof. That's what people have told me. And that's why I said it came to my attention. I have no proof.
Okay.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you very much. One of the things I'd like to bring up when it comes to the transfer station stickers. A long time ago, my father used to live in Lexington. And when they would register their vehicle or vehicles, they would ask for a transfer station sticker, which would be given to them so they could in turn put it on their car because they, they do have proof of the fact that they have, they're a citizen of the town. So, I mean, I'm only saying this for consideration, no motion, no, nothing else. Just that if we were to talk to the clerk, you know, I don't want to surprise anything, and Connor will look into it to see if that would work for us. And then it would ensure that people from Barrington would come and it would help with a lot of the bulky waste that's there. So something to consider, Madam Chair.
So one of the things that was just brought up at the review committee was right now we keep a log of the people who get transfer station stickers. So we write down their name and their address. And then it was brought up that not really, you know, for a better way to keep track of this stuff is that we can do it in an Excel spreadsheet. And then we did get a computer for next door. But so now if, you know, you know, we have these people logged in, the residents in there, you know, if they happen to move away, you know, you get another search of somebody coming in and they have the same address, obviously you know somebody moved out. So it would kind of have better control on that. Unfortunately, you know, again, it was brought up that if people moved out of town, would they still utilize the transfer station? And everyone that I've talked to who is moving out of Barrington or like moving to Arizona, like, so the, the chances of people coming back to use the transfer station are slim to none. But we are working on a process to, you know, kind of keep track of what is going out there and to better handle them.
Erin, the only reason, the only reason I brought that up is because I found that it was a system that worked well. And when I used my own vehicle, I had to go down and purchase a tag every year so that I could use my vehicle if, if his wasn't working or if mine got loaded or whatever. It was just brought up as a suggestion to try to make things smoother and easier. And that was the only reason behind it. It wasn't to have sad words as to criticize people working. I'm not doing, it was just an easy way to make it work. Because if you register your car, you get a dump stick. If you don't register it, you don't get a new one. So it's played in that way and makes it easier.
Yep, go ahead, Andy.
I was just saying, point of order, we just, we were going down a, a long road of memories and old time. And I just wanted to kind of move this along.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Andy, I didn't mean to do that, but that was just another way.
No, I hear you, George.
Any other comments on the review of the budget portion that is focused on the transfer station? Otherwise, I will thank you, Erin, for a very complete process. Thank our advisory budget committee for having questions available ahead of time for answers. And we will be moving to the highway budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin.
Mark Morrow, road agent, is participating by phone. He'll give you the breakdown here for the board and community. Again, the budget binder is found at the same location. This is section fifteen, which is linked in my report. I also want to highlight two quick changes that are included in my report. As you know, the position of mechanic was reverted back to a truck driver labor equipment operator. And the reduction in the budget as a result of that change, seventy-seven hundred dollars from the full-time wages and almost two thousand from the benefits. So you'll see that when updated numbers are provided later in the process. And finally, linked in my report and printed copies available to you as board members is the budget committee minutes with the questions and also the narrative addendum from the road agent explaining, providing detailed answers to the questions from the advisory budget committee. Mark, if you're ready, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mark.
Hi, because of COVID nineteen and the virtual meetings, I can't bribe the select board with my wife's whoopee pies like I did last year.
Give me my address.
So instead, I've been told that I need to come up with some Barrington trivia, so here goes. I'd like to talk about a Barrington resource that has contributed greatly to the economic prosperity of a town next door and the survival and welfare of another town even further away. That resource would be water, a substantial amount of it from the inconspicuous but yet abundant Bellamy River, which starts at the base of the Swains Lake Dam. So this water source alone was responsible for the prosperity and success of the Sawyer Woolen Mills in Dover. It was the largest woolen mill in the state for a long time. And without our water, it could not have even existed. So the mill owners at that time were very shrewd with securing water power. The mill owned Swains Lake and the building and several other dams further downstream to increase their holding capacity during times of drought. And this water was used to power the water wheels and turbines that spun the long rows of shafts that would drive the looms throughout the, throughout the mill building. So after Sawyer's Mill met its demise as a manufacturing complex, after a while, the Bellamy River was again looked to as a resource, this time as a drinking water source for the city of Portsmouth. That city's water supply used to come from where the P's Trade Port is located. In the mid nineteen fifties, the government wanted that land for an air force base and replaced the town's water supply with the Bellamy reservoir in Madbury, which was a major engineering feat at that time. Barrington's water still supplies over half of Portsmouth's drinking water to this day. Another mill that reaped the benefits of Barrington's water was the Cachico and Pacific Mills on Central Avenue in Dover. This was an extremely prosperous cotton mill that was founded in the eighteen twenties, just like Sawyer's was. This mill got its power from the Cachico River. So once again, the mill owners were masters at securing their water power. And they created or enhanced ponds in Barrington, like Nippo Pond, where I'm currently speaking to you from. Stone House is another one that they tapped into. And there's a few others, which would collect and hold water that would be released when needed and flow down the Isinglass into the Cachico at Rochester Neck and on into Dover. So we're extremely fortunate to have the phenomenal watershed capacity that Barrington possesses. There aren't many towns in the area that have the collection capacity that we do. It is just very ironic that of all the prosperity that this, that this resource generated, with the exception of a few humble sawmills and grist mills along the way, all of this success and prosperity was downstream, just very ironic. So that's it for the Bellamy. So on to the budget. Bear with me.
Mark is proposing a tax on the water leaving Barrington to pay for the highway department budget, is the board in support?
How much a gallon do you figure that's worth?
Second that motion.
So the first five lines of the budget, pretty much self-explanatory. Only thing that really stayed the same to speak of was Uh, the only thing that really stayed the same to speak of was, uh, earned time buyout stayed the same at ten thousand dollars. Hourly wages, um, came down, no, went up. Hourly wages went up. Overtime reduced, uh, from sixty-five thousand to sixty thousand. I think we're making better use of the manpower that we have now, uh, not wasting as much overtime. Employee benefits, uh, as Connor stated, uh, it went up, but it was, uh, brought down by eighteen hundred dollars or so, uh, because of the, uh, a new employee that, uh, is an entry level. So highway consultants, uh, line forty-three, forty-nine. That's engineering surveying. We basically took twelve thousand dollars from line forty-seven, thirty-one, which was highway layouts and reestablishments. And we added twenty-three thousand dollars of new money. Uh, this is to cover proposed engineering on, uh, on the South Malago Road drainage, uh, lakeside oaks, culvert reconstruction, uh, engineering for a, uh, riprap filter on the face of the Swains Dam. Potential core sampling on Deer Ridge Road to determine why that road keeps blowing up on us. Uh, it's, it's been a failure right from, right from the get-go. Uh, and if, if we want to go there, uh, potential engineering of the Orchard Hill Road realignment, should we decide to pursue it? This request would more than likely not cover all of the above-mentioned projects. Um, we'd definitely be prioritizing, uh, Malago Road drainage is, to me, it's the most important one. So this line increases by this, it, the line increases by thirty-five thousand dollars, but the, uh, line forty-seven, thirty-one, the layouts and reestablishments gets, gets, uh, decreased down to one dollar, just as a placeholder. Uh, forty-four, thirty-one, building maintenance. Decrease of five thousand, uh, it's been historically underspent. Uh, the twenty-twenty-one budget is planned for, uh, new gutters on the salt shed, water filtration system, upfitting of the back garage to enhance better vehicle maintenance. So this line goes from thirty thousand down to twenty-five thousand. Highway equipment rental, uh, we decreased that from thirty to twenty-five. It's been underspent for a few years. Uh, it's used for the rental excavator, uh, trench compacters, hydraulic hammers, things of that nature. So that's a decrease of five thousand there, down to twenty-five thousand. Highway advertising, we decreased it, uh, to five hundred, uh, because we don't use the, uh, don't use the newspaper anymore because of the cost. Highway dues, fees, um, that's been underspent. Uh, that's, uh, road agent membership dues, the Hampshire Public Works dues. That line, uh, three hundred dollars from five. Safety equipment, uniforms. Line forty-five, sixty-two. Due to the majority of the crew not electing to take advantage of the uniforms, uh, we'd be looking to give them a monthly stipend of eighty-eight dollars in lieu of the uniforms. Uh, boots and t-shirts would still be taken out of this line item. Uh, the line will be reduced from twelve thousand dollars to eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand, five hundred dollars with the stipend being taken out of that line. Line forty-seven, thirty-one. Layouts and reestablishment basically goes to a dollar. This is the line that the twelve thousand was taken out of to, uh, add to the engineering. Road maintenance contracts, line forty-three, fifty. This line is basically used for tree removal. Deer Ridge is scheduled for about twenty thousand dollars worth of tree work to remove the canopy on the, uh, on the main drag that's blocking the sunlight from the road. And with unanticipated storm damage, uh, you never know when something's going to blow through and then you need the tree guys. But, uh, there's a lot of overgrown areas of town that, uh, as we get towards the end of next year, if that money hasn't been used, uh, I can certainly find spots that, uh, that need the tree work. So there's an, an increase in ten thousand dollars in that line to, from thirty thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars. And here's my favorite, forty-four, thirty-three, vehicle maintenance. Uh, this line covers all vehicles and equipment maintenance. Hate to say it, but this one needs to remain the same because we have aging equipment that's starting to nickel and dime us, uh, just about the time you think you're on an even keel and things haven't, uh, broken for a while, bam, there's a five thousand dollar repair. So also I want to increase the level and the quality of the maintenance going forward to keep the newer equipment in better shape for a longer period of time to maximize the return on investment. I don't, I just don't see any way that this line could be cut without ramifications because, uh, we need to prolong the life of what we have, given the rising cost of replacing a unit before its time. Paved roads, uh, this covers coal patch, hot top, striping traffic remains the same at, uh, eighty-five thousand. Line forty-four, thirty-nine, street sign maintenance. Uh, this covers all the street signs, stop signs, you name it. Uh, we need to keep two of every sign in town. So, uh, Erin keeps track of all the ones that get, that get used. And at the end of the year, she makes a big order, uh, you know, be, before the end of the year, um, tries to do it all in one fell swoop. So that line is unchanged at six thousand dollars. Uh, street signs are expensive. Uh, line forty-four, fifty-two, paving. So this is all the, the major road paving projects in town that are sent out to bid. Our request is staying level at six hundred thousand due to the economic climate. However, we have a situation now where a lot of roads near the center of town are taking more and more traffic because they're trying to bypass the stoplights at, uh, one-twenty-five and Route nine at that intersection. These roads are in tough shape and need major work. And there's a few other roads further away from town that could use it too. Um, and I've heard that there's, um, there's momentum afloat to increase this line. Uh, I agree that it should be, um, because we're, rather than just trying to increase the miles of road that we do, we're trying to increase the quality of the roads that we do by addressing structural deficiencies and drainage issues before we just go ahead and pave them and just have them last another five years before they start to break up. So it's more quality than quantity is what we're kind of focusing on now. Line forty-six, sixty-two. Materials and supplies, this is structural steel welding supplies, nuts and bolts, uh, unchanged at eight thousand. Forty-three, fifty, for winter contractors. Uh, we've had several winter contractors, uh, just leave us, uh, so they, we've lost two of them, uh, since I've been here, just due to attrition. They were never replaced. I'm using the existing contractors more efficiently. Therefore, we, uh, we're going to try and reduce this line down to, uh, a hun, a hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is with the understanding that if we have the winter to remember, uh, we would have the, uh, winter emergency fund that we could go to if we needed it. Hopefully we won't. Line forty-six, sixty-three. Operating supplies, sand and salt. Uh, we're always going to be striving to reduce salt and sand consumption moving forward. Uh, we're looking to screen out some of our own native sand next year, so I'm hoping that we will not have to purchase any. Our new plow truck is being outfitted with, uh, ground speed control, uh, so that, uh, sander operation will be automatic. Uh, as the truck increases speed, the output of the sander will increase. As it slows down, the sand is slows down. The truck stops, the sand is stops. So this, it should really cut down on the waste and make our, make our, uh, applications a little more precise than what they have been. Uh, as we get more of these units over time, I think, uh, we can refine our delivery system pretty well. So we're reducing our materials line by thirty-two thousand from two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty. Here again, um, with the understanding that if, if all heck breaks loose and it really, really snows bad, uh, we would have the winter emergency fund to, uh, to cover it if need be. Here again, I hope not. So that's pretty much the budget in a nutshell. Any questions?
Steve, Advisory Budget Committee, did you feel that that satisfied the questions that the ABC had?
Yes, uh, this is Steve. Um, Mark, that was a, I really appreciate your responsiveness to our questions and most of them were, uh, as I expected, very thorough. The one line that's still, uh, I think we will want to get some more information before the budget process is over is that paving line. Um, as you know, uh, Peter brought out, and I don't know if he's on the call.
I am.
Auto registration fees do, uh, uh, are, are there for funding, uh, paving projects and, uh, still has not been used. So that when we look at paving, we wouldn't, we could potentially look at not only the operating budget amount, but also the use of that, uh, registration fee fund that's available. And I think that, as, as I noticed, there's a, will be further discussion with the, uh, select board later on, on the road plans. Um, and I think that as that, eh, discussion evolves, you know, we will, we will expect you to provide more details in terms of specifically, uh, which projects would be done and included in the budget, um, and also some prioritization of other projects that might be tackled or should be tackled as time goes on. Because one of the things that we're concerned with is if we try to not fund those projects this year or this coming year that really are significant and, and we have many areas that potentially may, may need more work that we're deferring into the future some major expenditures and we'd like to make sure as much as we can that, that that's being addressed. So those are my comments here. I don't expect us to get into all the detail here, but we do hope we'll see more before the budget is locked down.
Great. Um, George Bailey had his hand up first. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I have before me the, uh, printout that was updated on nine sixteen twenty and it's called October nineteen twenty twenty budget presentation, Mark, uh, the highway department. Well, I kept looking for this line item forty-seven, thirty-one, and I can't find those two numbers. Is there something I'm not doing or was that line taken out?
Select person Bailey, uh, road agent Mark Morrow misspoke. The line he was referring to was zero, one, four, three, one, two, zero, one, four, three, four, four. It's the first line of the second category.
I have those numbers, Connor. That's what I, that was what I was coming to from my question.
Yep. Just a, just a simple misspoke.
Oh, it's, it's right. Okay. The other, the other issue I have, and I guess if I may, Madam Chair, is that, uh, I have a request, uh, for the board to consider. And the request is that we put a warrant article in for an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for highway paving to go along with the, uh, six hundred thousand dollars that we have. And the reason why I've done it is that one, Mark has very meticulously gone over his report and not shown the road names, but showed that, uh, there is a need for it. And if, and I know all of us have driven around town and we can see that some of the roads only have the base coat, uh, and I'm not looking to get mine done, but I know that mine has not been done since I moved here, which just has a base coat and it's starting to chip away at everything else. But my road is just only as an example so I can speak to what I'm saying. I, I would like to see the board discuss the idea of putting a warrant article for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the budget, on the, underneath warrant articles for the voters to consider allowing us to put an additional two fifty for paving. Now, we have, uh, our voters and we have our buses. Our buses are one of my main concerns is because on my street, the, the bus comes up and down, uh, three times a day and comes across once on one twenty, I mean, one twenty-six. And, and, you know, you, you have concerns. Over the years, I've looked at some of these roads and they deteriorate and I would hate to see us with all the work we've put in, not have enough money to cover some of the other roads that are desperate. And I know that, uh, the ABC has asked for a ten-year plan. We have talked to Mark about a five-year plan. And I just think that we, we should consider asking the voters for an additional two hundred and fifty. This way here, we don't change the budget. We still show there's a need, but there's an extreme need as far as I'm concerned for the, uh, paving. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, go ahead, select person, Eric.
Um, first, I, question is with the ABC, what do they mean by the ten-year road plan?
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Can you, okay. Yeah, when I, when we are requesting a ten-year road plan, what we're looking at is, is really a, a spreadsheet or a matrix that identifies all the different roads, uh, in the town. And the dates that they've been, uh, treated or paved or worked on in the past and projecting into when they were twenty-year li, life or a ten-year life with, for the repairs that were done, uh, what year those roads are going to be coming up in the future. And especially given the fact that many of our roads are not lasting according to their projected life because of, uh, either, uh, flaws in the, in the weather or drainage or whatever, when they weren't addressed properly, that we have to now do major renovations. We want to make sure that we're not concentrating on a few major things this year, deferring into the future, major things that are going to come back to bite us. So that plan would be able to look at, look ahead each year as to what projected to need attention and by what year. Of course, that we know that's uncertain with, it has a range, but really with the spreadsheet that looks and says, if we put off some of the work that we could do this year in paving, this is going to hit us in five years and it's really going to be more major than what it would be if we did it today. So those are the kinds of considerations we're looking at. And we think you need to look out ten years because many of the roads that were supposed to last longer are really not lasting that long. So that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
May I add some comments?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
This may be me personally and not necessarily the budget committee, but, um, especially given Georgia's comment, um, I'm a little upset that we are charging the five-dollar registration fee and then never using it. And I don't know if we're simply unable to spend more than six hundred thousand, but I would really be opposed to Georgia's recommendation of putting a warrant article out there for two hundred and fifty thousand, where we have three hundred and fifty or more thousand sitting in that capital reserve. And, um, I'm a believer, eh, really probably strengthening what Steve just said. I'm a believer that if we can do it, we ought to do it. And we're raising that money and we're not doing anything with it. Is the goal to have a million dollars in that fund before we do anything? It's frustrating to me that we're charging people money and then doing nothing.
Um, select person Bailey, you had your hand up.
No, I, I still got more questions.
Oh, you're not done yet, select person, Eric, go ahead.
My hand's still up?
Your hand is still up.
Um, so my, uh, my thing, I worked on payment management plans and stuff when I was younger. But you look at, uh, twenty engineers, look at twenty, twenty-five years and stuff. And I agree the direction we're going. We have a lot of sand, but we don't have any fractured sand, and our roads went smaller to wider and stuff. And the hard work of the highway garage, you can see the mountain behind it, shows proves it with the drainage issues. And then to start off with the list, I'll go down a line, the safety equipment uniforms in my P brain mine, I figured it'd be more of a savings than that. That if we buy in bulk, Andy probably could help me with this, or something like that, uniform clothes or whatever, save money. That's something we'll discuss later. And then on paving, I agree about the downtown area, because we want to travel roads, but we're overlooking so many other roads. I can name off a lot of them. They only have wear course, and like the highway garage was put off so long, it'd be on repair, Sawyer Lane and Goose Neck, that was never tarcoated, it's on repair. Hall Road was concrete injected, and starting to show signs. So I strongly believe we need more money, and I think we should take it from that five-dollar thing and raise the budget and ask for a warrant article and babysit over the years. Because right now, we have rough numbers, what we did last year, six-sixty, I think we're like six-seventy-five, my Pete, roughly, and then just the added cost, but this year was six-forty-two roughly. So the six-hundred does not cover different line items, but we should establish more money in that. I feel seven-fifty should be a bottom line, and then go ask for more after that. Sorry, George. I don't know about how we break it up. I think we should come to some kind of agreement. And then on the salt, I feel we use way too much of tonnage used by the state surrounding towns and stuff. But with the automation, we'll better get a better control on, I agree with the agent. But one thing we got to keep in mind, once salt, once the damage is done, it's done. So we should be cautious on what we do, because all this water and stuff, we can ruin water wells if we're not careful. And basically, that's all my questions I see highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I want to take the opportunity to thank Connor and Peter to bring to my attention about that five-dollar fee. I was remiss in it. I would like to say this to you, and I would like to put the two-fifty from that fund, there's over three-hundred thousand in it, so put that money that we have there, put it into the roads, and we can still work with Mark and have Mark turn around and get that plan to get these roads up. And I mean, I can't stress enough on the safety issue. It's not to have a smooth road to go down there on your bicycle in the summertime, but it's to have the smoother road in the wintertime for the buses and everything else to go that way. So I will ask the board not to do the warrant article, but consider adding two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from that three-hundred we have there and force the issue and get these roads brought up, because as Dan has said, you know, it's not all just one area, it's it's other areas. And this way here, we can do what's necessary. I mean, I'm talking with a man with just wants to talk, but I'm just asking you to consider that, and I'm well done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Select person, Vice Chair Knapp.
Yep, my general comment on it is, is I think if we're going to consider raising it, that we step it and we do not do a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars in additional money. I think George is asking for a hundred-and-fifty above what we normally do right now for a warrant article. But if we're going to step it, we do it in a smaller increment that's a little bit more manageable, because I just think from a budget end, I don't know how many people are following the news, but there are they're talking about delinquencies, late mortgage payments, and everything else that's really starting to impact people. And if people are following the economy at all, unemployment numbers and wage numbers are starting to really see the impact of our current COVID crisis. So hammering people with additional costs and expenses this year, I don't think is a good decision.
May I speak again?
You can, Peter. Go ahead.
Again, if it comes out of the capital reserve, it's really not going to be a tax issue. It's really money that we've already set aside for roads. I think the bigger question is whether Mark thinks adding two-hundred-and-fifty thousand could actually be done, because for many years, in my experience in town for over forty-five years, is we've appropriated a lot of money for roads and then never spent it. And so the big question in my mind is, could we actually do it? But if Mark decides that yes, we could, it's not going to impact the tax rate, because it's already in a capital reserve, and there's still going to be another hundred and something thousand left beyond two-fifty. So I don't think what George proposed was really what Andy thinks it was. But again, I'll drop out of the discussion again.
Okay. So it sounds to me like if I could summarize after hearing the presentation, Mark should potentially get together with the town administrator, come up with a plan, and potentially cover more of the paving over the next year utilizing funds that are available. Am I summarizing that correctly, Vice Chair Knapp?
Yep, I agree with that, and I agree with Peter when we talk about using the capital reserve. Just to echo that, I know Dan had made a comment about tying it into the budget line, so I just wanted to address that.
Okay. Well, I think a positive response that you're all supporting the Highway Department and that they can be returning to look at any number of additional roadways that could be covered. Before I close out, I see you, thank you, Dan. Before I close out this portion, TA McGyver, do you have comments that you'd like to make about what you've heard?
Sure. So just a couple of quick things. One, the Road Agent at the last Select Board meeting provided a priority list of paving projects that I think total up to about nine-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. So certainly, myself and the Road Agent are willing and prepared to consider additional projects with additional funding, and you already have a list to show where that money would go. And so, as Mark said at the beginning of his presentation, given the economy and as Vice Chair Knapp has mentioned about what folks are experiencing, we didn't feel like this was a year to go and balloon the the amount of money we put into paving. That's also one of the reasons that Mark has programmed a number of road projects, which are are labor-intensive. These aren't just shim and overlay roads, these are full-depth replamation and reconstruction. And so they'll be labor-intensive and to do it right and everything like that. So you have what we look at already, and we can, you know, itemize that out to show some of the additional funding sources. Real quick on the transportation fee capital reserve, so something to keep in mind, the town has done a great job over the years of setting money aside for future equipment purchases in the Fire Department. And, you know, that matches up with the replacement schedule very nicely, knowing that the funds will be there. One of our replacement programs, which is grossly underfunded, is the Highway Heavy Equipment Capital Reserve account. So we generally appropriate enough in a year or two to make a purchase, and then we start the cycle over again. But the replacements are programmed much sooner than that. And so something to keep in mind about that transportation fee capital reserve is it's available for a variety of funding, not just road construction projects, not just paving projects, but also equipment replacement. And so I certainly agree with the treasurer's standpoint about why would we collect this if we don't have a plan to spend it? And I would absolutely concede that there's no specific plan to use that, the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that's available in there. But I think it's a valuable funding tool for the Select Board to have it at its disposal in order to set priorities and have funding that isn't a direct tax impact to residents in order to use. And so whether that money is used to reconstruct a gravel road, pave more, or, you know, repave more paved roads, or replace Highway Department equipment, there's certainly plenty of opportunities to use it, and it's up to the Select Board to set those priorities. So thank you for the opportunity. We'll come back at the next meeting with some more details on funding sources and where that would be used.
Very good. Select Person Air, go ahead.
I saw the Chief Walker's pretty face and reminded me. Years ago, Paul, the last maintenance guy, he said he got an estimate to do the safety building. The safety building's going to be coming up sometime, too, it's going to be on repair. The back half's breaking up pretty good, so that's another thing I forgot to mention.
Okay, I think we'll leave it to Mark and Connor to come up with a comprehensive list for everyone to review. Thank you. I'm about to move on to public comment, unless TA McGyver tells me there's something else that needs to take place.
Just some good news to conclude this section of the budget review. So you have, the board members have printed copies of additional items to go in your budget binder. I also link those to my report. A couple of pieces of really good news came in with this. So I have notes in my report under each one, but I'll just highlight the Budget Committee had asked for a vehicle fuel analysis. So I provided a comprehensive analysis and updated recommendation, reducing that budget request by ten thousand. So we gained ten thousand dollars there. The biggest news is on workers' compensation. I had anticipated that our rates would continue to increase as they have in the past, but we actually experienced over a ten percent decrease in our workers' compensation rates this year. And so special thanks to department heads and staff across the town for doing their part to stay safe in their work roles, and we're experiencing a fourteen-thousand-dollar reduction in workers' compensation, which is absolutely terrific. And the one other update, which I had already discussed with the board, but we finally got the paperwork, the health insurance premium guaranteed maximum rating increases twelve-point-six percent. And so I updated those numbers, and that added eight-thousand-two-hundred dollars to the overall budget request. So as it stands right now, with all the changes that have been agreed upon so far, we're at a full percentage point lower of a requested budget than we were than we're in currently this year, three thousand. So I'll be providing updated documents later on in the process, but we're certainly trending in the right direction.
Excellent. Thank you. So when I mentioned moving to public comment, I received a few hands. The first hand that went up was a Stephanie Diamond. Stephanie, you may need to unmute yourself, or Connor McGyver may be able to unmute you. And please, public comment is for a total of fifteen minutes, but limited to three minutes per speaker. So I tend to start timing when people start speaking. Stephanie, are you out there, and have you been unmuted?
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I have to beg your pardon, because I have issues with my eyes. My name is Stephanie. I prepared a statement. My name is Stephanie Diamond. I've lived in Barrington for twenty-eight years. I'm here to comment and request action by the board to remove the illegal signage, the Trump Pence and Corky Methner signs, which appeared overnight on the telephone polls in our town. These are primarily along routes nine, one-twenty-five, two-oh-two, one-twenty-six, and Cape Road. These signs are approximately fifteen to twenty feet in the air and are in direct violation of RSA six-six-four colon seventeen, which specifically prohibits political advertising from being placed on telephone poles. The polls are the private property of the owners, in this case, Eversource. Removal of these signs is further complicated by RSA two-thirty-six colon seventy-five, which allows only the poll owners to remove the violating signage or seek recompense to have this done. RSA six-six-four colon fourteen does, however, allow removal of signs by approved personnel, quote, "the property owner or those authorized by the property owner." The problem is that when no one knows who posted the signs, no one is willing to step forward and act to enforce the law. This law applies equally to all the residents of New Hampshire, and therefore, illegal signage should not be tolerated. In my personal opinion, the person or persons who posted the signs understood this, thus placing them easily out of reach, some of which are offensive. When the violators of the law are unknown, and there is no one to punish or go after, the citizens must suffer the burden of wrongdoing without any relief. As a resident of Barrington, I request, no, I am demanding that the board perform its civic duty and contact Eversource and request permission for the town to remove these signs. This would be in pursuance with RSA six-six-four colon fourteen and has not been done to date. I have been in contact with the town manager, members of the Select Board, Eversource, the DOT, the DOJ. No one will act. The law applies equally to all of us. This disregard for the law is a perfect example of what is tearing our country apart. I would protest that these were Biden signs or any other political signs. Telephone poles are illegal to use for political advertising, and as a result, I also contacted the Concord Monitor. The town of Barrington has the opportunity to do the right thing and uphold the law by requesting permission for our town to remove the signs. I doubt that anyone listening here would expect that they would deny this request. This is the law, and in a time of divisiveness, we all need to respect each other and the laws by which we live. Act locally, think globally. The Select Board here is here to enforce the laws of the state where they apply to the town. It's not the few, it's the many. It's not one of five, but all of you. You all need to enforce the law and attempt to do so, and I am asking you to do your duty. Get these signs down and get them down now. All you have to do is ask permission from Eversource.
Stephanie, thank you. I've let you go over by thirty-four seconds, so in fairness to the process, I have to move on to the next public speaker. Select Person Air, you'd like to speak as a Barrington resident?
Yes, Daniel La, three-three-four Old Concord Highway. I'm making a hypothesis, but while during the meeting, there's been a severe accident outside, number seventeen, I've counted, and watching through the window and attending this meeting, I've witnessed on many occasions, the Barrington and Police Department doing an outstanding job in a bad situation, and that right as her, my other neighbor, it was a bad situation, and they handled it very well. That's why I'm making a hypothesis, I physically wasn't over there, but I saw the lights.
Okay, very good. Do we have any other people who would like to speak for public comment?
On my end, I see Stephanie Diamond's hand is still up, which I can lower that unless there's an additional.
I have a Michael Flaherty who'd like to speak.
Yes.
Michael, I'm going to set the timer. If you could hold off one second, please, while I do a reset. Have you unmuted yourself?
I believe I have.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Flaherty.
Yeah, I'll only be less than less than a minute here. Under the new business agenda, the last item, at least in the copy I have, request to purchase the Porsche Map two-twenty-four Lot Ten. I just want to let the Select Board know that I'm here to answer questions when it does get to that point. That's the end of my comment.
Fantastic, thank you. And it looks like Chair Hardicraft has frozen for a minute, so while we give her a chance to join back on, Chair Knapp, Vice Chair Knapp, I don't see any additional public comments, so if you'd like to move on to the review of minutes, we have two sets of minutes to review, and I'll try to get the Chair Hardicraft back.
All right. Seeing, excuse me, we have no additional comments, I closed the public comment section. We have the review of minutes for September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye. All right, and then motion to approve the October fifth, twenty-twenty minutes?
I have a question.
Don't call me madam.
I'm sorry. Well, I don't know what kind of work you're in.
Go ahead, George.
Please.
Yep.
All right, my comment is on the October fifth minutes, under page five, under Highway Department position. It says here, at a previous meeting, the Select Board voted to change an open highway department position to a mechanic position. to a mechanic position and alter the pay level with the candidate identified for the Highway Department recruit. The select board was asked to revert the position back to the previous pay grade and the title of truck driver, laborer, and equipment operator." So, is there any comment that the Connor or anybody would like to make? And the reason I say that is, as it said, I did not recall that we approved the position of a mechanic. And that's my whole question. I have nothing to do with the gentleman that he hired or the person, excuse me, the person that he hired for the other piece, but I just have a comment on our approval of the mechanic. Could the chair please go over that?
Nope, you are correct on that, George. We were talking about getting the job description squared away on that and updated, but we hadn't approved it at that point in time. It was going to come back before the board. And then Mark found the candidate that he did and hired that individual because he was so exemplary from what I was told.
Could I ask that we get that corrected, please?
So, we can pull the minutes for the vote, but the position of mechanic, that job description was fully approved by the board, and that position was created. It doesn't matter because it reverted back. So, it's really, the significance isn't important. But to be clear, there was a decision by the board to finalize that job description, create the position, allow the town to advertise for the position, which we did. There was a request to review some of the additional job duties between when the position was advertised and when it was hired, which started to happen, but then, you know, we changed course. So, I would argue that the minutes accurately reflect the history of the position being created. And if you'd like to table a finalization of these minutes, and I can provide a link to the video where the decision was made, I'd be happy to.
No, I know what you're talking about there, Connor. Dan?
Well, I made the motion without to review and stuff, but I didn't think it was finalized till it got back to us.
No, we did vote on it, and Connor's correct in that. And then, there was something about how it needed to be reviewed further, and it was going to come back before the board, though. I do remember that.
That was your job, the motion.
Yeah, no, I remember. I know.
So, does the board want to approve these minutes or table them until the next meeting?
I'm requesting that we table them until the next meeting, just so we can validate what was said and make sure that we've appeased George's request.
No problem. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
I got a text from Tracy, Vice Chair Knapp, said, "No internet. I will call in and let Andy lead the rest of the meeting." Congratulations on your promotion to Chair.
Yes, just like the old days.
I don't know if she's successfully called in yet, though, so we'll have to keep asking for it.
Dan, do you have another comment?
Yeah, point of order. How will you address you? Madam, sir?
Use your best judgment. All right, moving along, Staff Reports Administrator MacIver.
Yes, thank you. I only have one item. This is an emergent item that came up over the weekend. I sent the board an email today. I don't expect all of you have seen it. The radio repeater tower went offline over the weekend. Special thanks to Chief Walker, who spent a lot of his weekend working through repairs and diagnosing the problem. The end of the day, the failed piece of infrastructure was the antenna. And so, we're looking for approval from the board to do a couple of things. First, we'd like to obviously get the antenna repaired as soon as possible. We have a tentative date of Wednesday morning to get that antenna, new antenna installed. What we need from the board is an appropriation from the emergency communication capital reserve account. Additionally, the current quote is $9,620.45, which falls under the purchasing policy requirement of a sealed bid process. I don't think it's likely it will go a lot over that, but for the chance that it does, I'd like the board to consider authorizing an expenditure up to $15,000 and waiving the purchasing policy in order to expedite this process in the emergent situation and get that tower back online. I know Chief Walker was away at an emergency call earlier. I think I saw that he had joined the meeting. If you have additional questions for him, but the two things I'm looking for, an appropriation of 15, up to 15,000 and waive the purchasing policy.
Does anyone have any questions?
How long is it going to take for the repair?
Yeah.
I need you to use your hand, Dan, just because I can't see everybody on my screen. Thank you. Go ahead, George.
My question is, how long would it take for the repairs?
I've got stuff lined up. As long as you approve the money tonight, they had, we put a climber on hold. The climber will be here Wednesday morning. They'll get the antenna up in place, and we should be back online late afternoon on Wednesday.
Thank you, Chief.
Dan?
To clarify something, this from my personal knowledge, anything over 5,000 has to be three bids or under 5,000?
Anything over 5,000 requires an attempt to receive three quotes, and anything over 10,000 requires sealed bid pursuant to the purchasing policy.
All right, thank you.
So, the town for its emergency communication needs primarily contracts with Two Way Communication, a supporter of Motorola, and that would be who would be dispatched to coordinate the work. They contract out some of the work, like the tower climbing and whatnot.
Jim?
I was just going to say, hey, there's very few people that do that job. So, I mean, to get the request for bids is probably near impossible.
All right, Dan, do you have another question or?
That was just information of my personal self.
If I can add just a little bit of information to the issue is this was kind of a 50-50 deal. We spent most of the night working with Consolidated to make sure that the problem wasn't a phone line issue. Around 1 o'clock yesterday afternoon, we determined it wasn't. Two Way came right out and attempted to get us back online, realizing the problem was a little bit more. They got right on it first thing this morning and knowing full well that we're in kind of a real deep hole right now without that repeater. We have limited radio communications, especially in the north and west part of town. So, it's important to understand that both Consolidated and Two Way worked side by side with me over the weekend, attempting to get the problem fixed. And, you know, the best possible spot we could be is that we'll be back up and running by late Wednesday, as long as you approve the funding.
All right, Dan, do you have another comment?
No, I'm actually raised.
Okay, put your hand down, please. George?
I would like to make a motion if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, I was going to make the motion to allow for the appropriation of the emergency capital reserve. Is that the motion you would like to make?
I'll let you go ahead and do it. It sounds better from you, so I'll consider second here.
Okay, so we got a first. Up to 15,000. Yep, so we've got a first and a second for a motion for the appropriation for 15, up to $15,000 from the emergency capital reserve. Roll call vote?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sukoshai.
Sukoshai, okay. Hey, Tracy's back. All right.
You look like Tracy.
So, the second one I'm looking.
Tracy, could you raise your hand?
So, the second item I'm looking for is a motion for waiver from the purchasing policy, as well as any need for quotes or bids related to the policy. Dan?
I'll make the motion as stated.
Okay. Okay, so George or Tracy, doesn't matter. All right, so roll call vote?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardicraft, aye.
Sukoshai.
Knapp, aye. All right.
Thank you. I'll keep the board informed when those projects are complete.
All right, anything else, Administrator MacIver?
No, I'll turn it over to Administrator, Municipal Office Administrator Cottle when she's ready.
You mean the beautiful Municipal Office Administrator Cottle, if anyone saw her Friday night?
The bumblebee.
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday night.
Thursday, yes. I was buzzing around Town Hall for a few minutes. Went over to Moheramet. It was quite fun. Thank you. For your review and signature, we have a payroll manifest addendum, as well as I will remind you that we do need a few wet signatures on a deed returning property repurchased by a previous owner to that previous owner, and the two raffle permits that were approved earlier today. That's it.
Very good. Moving on to old business, the 2021 road improvement projects. Connor, do you want to take this or is Mark taking it?
Yep, so we'll both be available. I'll start with the, so the appreciate the board's support at the last meeting on the paving projects that Mark presented. Mark also presented a review of road improvement projects. And so, two items from that were kind of tabled off the list for further discussion. So, that's what I have on the agenda tonight. The first is Orchard Hill. So, what I did is I went back through the different decisions, copies from the minutes, mostly from 2018, although some of the conversation started in 2017, where the town was reviewing this project on Orchard Hill. So, big picture started where the town took the prior owners to court because there was construction in what was the town's right of way. After the court decision, fortunately, the property owned, the property changed hands. The new owner was interested and willing to work with the town to reestablish the road right of way, expanding it, allowing for the drainage and safety improvements that the town was interested in completing. So, that property owner worked with the zoning board, the planning board, and ultimately, the select board to have a new roadway laid out that's 50 feet wide, 35 feet wide is a right of way, and 15-foot slope easement. You have a copy of that layout in your packets, the 11 by 17 page. And so, the town was interested in acquiring this additional property on this road in order to make those improvements. And, you know, later in the process, the select board was presented with the cost estimate, which I included a copy of as well in my materials. That was in November that it was, you know, programmed at about 166,000. So, no work the town has performed, none of these construction activities, these reconstruction activities, since those decisions have been made. We have acquired the right of way. The town has, the road is laid out as described in the plan, but the town has not yet reconstructed the road. And so, the road agent in reviewing road projects, understanding that the select board had previously made this agreement and started down the path of reconstructing this road, has prioritized that project in order to get the grades taken care of, the drainage taken care of, and also the safety concerns with the visibility taken care of. And so, that background information, it seemed like there was some confusion at the last meeting. So, I wanted to make sure that that background information was there and certainly interested in answering additional questions from the board or researching additional information prior to making a decision or commitment. But hopefully, that provides some clarity on why this project was proposed and what exactly is proposed for work. Oh, it looks like Tracy has joined back on the computer.
I see her.
Yep, I see her. I was just calling on her, but I had muted myself, so I will turn the reins back over to Tracy.
So, in reference to the project, it appears to me from reviewing the material that you provided, TA MacIver, that we approved this project two years ago?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm not sure, and I will admit to being very new to the select board, that I understood the scope of the amount of work to be done. But what I understand is that we obtained a right of way from the property owner, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, and we obtained that property, that right of way from the property owner with the understanding we would make the improvements to this roadway, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do we have, I mean, certainly, we have an ethical responsibility. Do we also have a legal responsibility now that we've changed the deed and taken on the right of way?
I wouldn't necessarily go so far as to say I believe the board has an immediate legal obligation to perform this work. I can certainly seek a legal opinion if you'd prefer, but I think the understanding at the time was that the town was acquiring the right of way in order to do the work.
Okay, how many of us that are currently on the select board in 2018 voted on that issue?
All the, the entire board except for Jim Sukoshia.
Okay, so, I'm of the opinion that while I don't like spending $160,000 on a more rural road, that potentially, we would need to follow through with what we agreed upon, but that's just my opinion. Select person, Bailey, go ahead.
Thank you very much. TA has provided us with some material. In the minutes from the 1/22/18 board meeting, there was a, we had another discussion there. And during the discussion, Mrs. Hatch turned around and seconded to approve the concept, January 2018 for Norway Plains as presented to the road location and the improvement on the safety of Orchard Hill. We voted for that, but if you look at the map that went along with it, it did not take into consideration both of the, I'll call them, humps in the road. So, you know, it was just there for where we had the building and the barn and everything else, just to get to the edge of the property, and that's all we had did with under the conceptual. So, as far as doing the, I agree with, we should do that part there with, straighten the road out. But when it comes time to spending the additional money as recommended by our engineering firm, I have a little difficulty with it, and I can be convinced not to have difficulty. But two boys in King made that concept, and it came out to be 166,000 to pick up the rest of the road. And then, there was another one that came there that included more money to do the humps in the road. So, I need some convincing, Madam Chair.
Very good. Select Vice Chair Knapp had his virtual hand up next.
Thank you. I was just going to make the comment that as much as I don't love the idea of spending the money, you know, we do have money that is set aside, and we can do it without really creating a tax impact to our residents. So, if we're going to do it, I would look at doing it that way.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair Knapp. Can I ask Select Person Bailey to turn off his hand, please? Select person, Eric, go ahead.
I do not recall this, this plan, anything past here. And I don't know where George got the information, the price on the hump. I didn't, I don't have that information. I didn't see it. But I like to look at area of scope work and dress everything at once. And two, I like to look at priorities and stuff. I'm not saying we don't do this, but we take care of priorities first. And the only thing I remember agreeing on is just this plan that's shown in front of me. It was at the planning board, it was at the selectman's office, and clear it up. And if we do it, I don't agree with engineers' estimates. I've proven them wrong before in the past, but if we are doing it in-house, we have the ideal situation, and Jim being a contractor loved this. We got trucks, we got fuel, we got labor, that's not even included in that price. So, do we really put it back into the budget or we just, I don't mind carrying this number in case we have to sub it out. So, we have a budget number, but it's not an actual cost.
Okay.
How you say it?
So, it sounds to me like what I'm hearing is that after reviewing all of the material from 2017 and even later but forward, that the board would agree that our intention was to. that our intention was to upgrade this road. I know making it passable for emergency vehicles was important, but it appears that making sure that runoff does not continue on this road is important as well. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Mention one thing regarding scope. So select person Bailey and select person air mentioned that the plan shows the expanded right of way on the lower portion of the road. And certainly that is, that plan shows the area that the road, the existing road was not consistent with the existing right of way. And so the work that was done with the property owner in that area was confined to that section of road. The the engineer's estimate, that project estimate provided by Du Bois and King of 166,000, that was in the entire stretch of road up to just past the top of the second knoll. And so the the idea was always, and select person air mentioned, the idea was always to take and say, if we're going to go and do work there, let's take care of all of the problems, not just some of the problems. And anybody that's been out there, that top knoll is is certainly the bigger safety hazard from a visibility standpoint, but also the grades are pretty steep there as well. And so the the plan only shows the lower section because that's the only area that the town laid out separate. But the scope was always kind of included in the bigger piece. Thank you for that opportunity.
Okay. Do I, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. Putting all that together, and I respect Connor's comment, but also that's the section that came before the ZBA to have done and everything else to approve that road to be straightened out. I am not in contention with it. It's just that when you look at Du Bois and King, their total was 131,960,000 and they had a contingency fund of 25%, which was 32,990 for a total of 164,950 or 166, as their estimate goes with it. And I I and I respect Connor, but I didn't see anything else in all this paperwork that put us past that point. But if it was put past that point as a unsolicited or a solicited but not written down program, then I'm just going to have to go along with it. And so I I would, that's all I got to say. I'm not happy with it, but I will turn around and do it. Also, the other part that has my concern, and I express this to with Mr. Air and with Connor. There are two sections here that have grave sites. Now, the grave sites are located somewhere around where it says tax on your on your drawing. There's a little spot in the center that says tax map, such and such. Right in that area, there was a place that we were putting flags, we, the American Legion, when I was participating in this. And it was a area that had Revolutionary Soldiers and also around the the section where where the family was buried. Then as the custom was, they had their other individuals that were the slaves were buried on the outer section. And I I do not see them on this here. I went down and talked to Barbara and Masha today to see if it was designated, but only further up the road did they show where the other cemetery was. And I do have a concern that when they go to do the work and everything else, that they don't trample over or disturb or what have you. So if we are sending out anything else, I would appreciate if that would be there. And I I see that the commissioner is here. So, you know, I just say this, we all have an understanding. Thank you.
Cemetery Commissioner Walker, do you want to speak to that? You'll need to unmute though, Rick.
By, excuse me, by New Hampshire state law, you cannot dig within 25 foot of a gnome property or a line, lot line for a burial ground, and that's the reason because stuff is outside. So as we get into that process, we will have to take a look at that and make sure that we're following the law appropriately. Thank you.
Rick, I really appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing that up. It's just something that being respectful, that's all. Thank you.
So to add to, we we approved all other road improvement projects. To add to the road improvement projects, is there a motion to add the Orchard Hill improvement?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I gotta.
No, hang on. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
No, I I I'll second if I want to understand what the motion is.
The the motion is the oh, the motion is to add the Orchard Hill improvement to the approved road improvement projects.
All right.
Okay. And I have a second from Bailey?
Or me.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote beginning with select person air, please?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye. Sikosha, present.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Onto Lakeside Oaks Drive Culvert. I'm going to let Connor give us a very quick overview of, it was a very good suggestion, but it appears a suggestion that we can't utilize. Go ahead, Connor.
Yes, and just real quick to wrap up Orchard Hill, there's going to be plenty more board involvement in that project. We're just adding it to the list of proposed projects for next year. There'll be engineering, there will be decisions on scope, there will be review of the costs. So that's not the final decision. As far as Lakeside Oaks Drive Culverts, I included what the response from the attorney was about evaluating permanently discontinuing the access off Hall Road. So I'm asking the select board to consider how to proceed with the information that the town constructing a new section of private road between Pearl Lane and Peabody Way is not possible per state law.
Okay. Select person, air, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah. So have we exhausted everything? Has a certified letter gone out, notified the association and property owner of a failed culvert?
So I, no, and that's why I'm asking how the board would like to proceed. I do not believe that the proper approach is to ask the residents of that road to improve the culverts. The culverts have not failed. They're just not sufficient to properly manage the dam. And so I I do not, I do not believe that asking the the residents of that road to replace the culvert in order for the town to be able to properly manage the dam is appropriate. But if the board would like to take that action, I'm happy to.
Okay.
We could keep.
Please don't talk over each other. That's okay. Could somebody raise their hand, whoever would like to speak, please? And I mean virtual hand.
I thought that's raised.
No, I don't have a virtual hand up. Go ahead, select person air.
Being on the conservation, the being a town where is that things in any failure of there is not the town's responsible as the owner of that property or that association. They cannot do it. It should be a legal response because there are environmental issues and stuff. And beyond the conservation, I guess you guys, town doesn't care about the turtles and the frogs. This should be notified.
Are you done speaking, select person air? Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? And if no one else would like to speak to this issue, would anyone like to make a motion in reference to adding Lakeside Oaks Drive Culvert to the road improvement projects?
So moved.
Do I, do I have a second? I will make a second because I think we need to fix the culvert. Roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Yeah, present.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, nay.
That's a tough one. Sikosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And similarly, there'll be plenty more opportunity for board involvement to provide direction on this throughout the process, but it is an important piece of infrastructure improvement. I appreciate the support of the board.
Yeah, it's going, it's going to go on the list that we can do it. So that's what we need to get started.
Yep, at least evaluating. Highway Garage Office Improvements, TA MacGyver, can you speak to that situation?
Just real quick, we're still evaluating the feasibility and costs of securing that permanent or semi-permanent trailer for the highway facility. The remedial action taken following the 9/28 select board meeting has afforded the board and highway department some time in order to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the town long term. Certainly, you know, with a an effort to not waste any money and to make best use of the space available. So we hope to have a more comprehensive update for the next select board meeting on October 26th. I wanted to let you know that we're still working diligently on that.
Okay, thank you. Next up is MAP 126 Lot 18, a purchase price reduction request. So we have a piece of property and it appears to me that the Town Land Committee reached out, that there was an agreement by one family to purchase and then divide the property amongst the others. To resurvey the property will be between $7,000 and $8,000. They're asking for a reduction in the $31,540 asking price. Questions, comments, concerns from the board? I see Vice Chair Knapp, your hand is up.
Yep, my general comment is this is a lot that is, has lake rights. And I think would bring all of that and then some if it went for auction. So I do not support reducing the price.
Okay. And select person, oh, I'm sorry. Were you done, Vice Chair Knapp?
Yes, I'm done.
I didn't wait for your hand to go off. I apologize. Select person, air, comment, question, concern?
Being the lazies on for the town's committee and stuff, I, they were there for all the money, monies. If I wouldn't, do we have a recommendation from, I don't see, they they said we do a reduction?
No.
No.
I don't see the town land supporting a reduction.
That is correct. Okay. So I I'm going to ask the board if anyone, oh, go ahead, select person Bailey.
I I also must have known that, you know, that's, that is a good piece of property and I cannot support a reduction on that. I just think that with, as a select person that pointed out, it has lake rights and there's not too many people that have the right. So that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm, so I'm going to ask this just once and I will pause for 30 seconds. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this? In absence of a motion, the price would remain as it was offered. Would anyone like to make a motion? Seeing as there is no motion, the purchase price for the butters of the property for MAP 126 Lot 18 remains as it was offered, $31,540.
And Chair Hardikoff, I know we're not in public comment, but I wanted to make sure that you know, in case you didn't see it. I believe the family that made the request for a reduction is participating in the meeting and raised a digital hand. So if you'd like to defer to public comment, you could, but I just want to make sure you're aware.
I will certainly defer that section of the meeting to public comment. Thank you. Next up is the fire tanker cab chassis. I know we've talked a lot about this and we're being asked to consider offering it for sale through a sealed bid process with a $10,000 minimum or to retain it for future highway use. Questions, comments, concerns? In the absence of questions, comments, oh, go ahead, select, I have select person Sikosha first and then select person Bailey.
Did we reach out to Rochester? Were they not interested in renting?
Correct.
Okay. Good, good question, select person Sikosha and select person Bailey.
That was my question.
Okay, excellent. So do I have a motion to either place this item for bid through sealed auction or retain it for future highway use? I'll entertain a motion for either.
But you know, that's awful hard, Madam Chair, because, you know, one, one side of it gives us the extra money to pay down part of the expense of the new one. And secondly, we have Mark that's saying that he can put it together and use it and it passed me. It's, it's awful hard. That's just my last comment. Sorry.
Okay. And I have select person, Vice Chair Knapp with his hand up, and then I have Chief Walker. Go ahead.
I was gonna defer my comment to hear if Rick and our highway supervisor had an air, highway superintendent had anything they would like to add before I added my comment. Sorry.
Go ahead, Chief. Go ahead, Chief Walker.
Is just the, whenever, if the truck sells through a bid process, that that money goes to the general fund. And we don't have a particular, the fire department doesn't have a particular care which way you folks decide to go. I I believe, and I don't want to speak for Mark, but I believe that that $10,000 figure, if if a bid would come in, the high bid would come in lower than that, then I think the town should reserve the right to meet with Mark and see if it makes sense to keep the truck or to let it go for a lower price. But please, I don't want to speak for Mark.
Okay. Mark, if you're out there, could I get you to unmute your phone doing star six for us? And let us know if you would like us to offer it through sealed bid for 10,000 or if you'd like us to retain it?
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I definitely think we should try to sell it first. For me to turn that into a viable unit for the highway department. I mean, the truck is in pristine condition. Don't get me wrong. It's in great shape. It's it's in phenomenal shape. But the configuration of the truck would need some altering for me to be able to make a plow truck out of it. The chassis would have to be shortened. The rear end would have to be changed out for a a lower geared unit for more power. The radiator and the charge air cooler would have to have holes put into them to take a power takeoff shaft off the crankshaft to a front pump. So it's just a lot of, just a lot of things that would have to be done to it at cost to turn it into a viable unit. So yeah, I mean, if we can get anywhere as close to eight to 10 grand for the thing, I think we ought to go for it.
Okay. So your recommendation is to place it for sealed bid with a minimum of 8,000?
Yeah, I wouldn't go any lower than that.
Okay. So do I have a motion from the select board to offer the cabin chassis for sale for a minimum of 8,000? Select Vice Chair Knapp, go ahead.
Yep, I was going to say I will, based on the feedback from Mark and Rick, I will make the motion to offer the fire truck cab and chassis for sale with a purchase price of $8,000.
And I will second that. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with select person air?
Yeah, present.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Just to let you know, I intend to offer that for sale with the land auction for a live auction to be scheduled in December. So we can just handle the transfer of property all at once.
Sure. Consensus on that, everyone? Are you comfortable with that? Yes?
Yep. Did you say November, Connor?
December.
December, thank you.
Any objections?
Air.
That's fine. Onto new, I, yeah, onto new business because we have four people that were consensus. Okay. Cemetery accounts payable receivable management. So this is a proposal to basically make the process of burying your loved ones easier on those that need the services. And we're doing approximately 12 to 15 burials per year. And it would be bringing the process in-house. Is that correct, TA MacGyver?
More or less. It's a very minor change and and the board wouldn't be approving that change tonight. It would just be letting the cemetery trustees know that they're open to it. So there's a few situations that arise each year, which cause the family to need to to contact and pay the grave digger directly. And so the trustees are interested in in reevaluating that process to make it a little bit cleaner and more professional for the family. And to do so, the recommendation would be to have the town just manage the accepting payment and making payments. We already do that for the grave sites anyways. But this would just make it, you know, in those few situations that arise per year, this would just make it one fewer contact that the family would need to make. So the trustees plan to evaluate the process in whole to look for other opportunities to make improvements. But they'd like to know if this would be something the select board would be open to basically taking the accounts payable, accounts receivable and rolling it into the grave site management as well.
Okay. Go ahead, select person Bailey.
My question, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, to Rick, is it, does that mean that instead of dealing with the family, you would deal with the? of dealing with the family, you would deal with the funeral home directly and they would be the one person that way?
Yes, in, in some cases, a funeral home handles it directly. But the, the four or five times a year in which the services have already taken place and the funeral home's no longer in the process, it forces the family to work directly with the grave digger. And we're, we're, again, we're looking for options to perhaps do that in-house. And all, there would be no tax impact because, or minimal tax impact. The cemetery clerk would, would certainly have to pay the, sign the invoice to pay the bill and stuff. But from a money in, money out standpoint, the town wouldn't be making any money nor spending any money. It would be just, we'd pay it and then be reimbursed.
So if by example, I would look at, it would be somebody that had passed away in the colder months and we couldn't get to it until the April? Is that, is that partially part of it?
More likely in the fact that it would be likely with a cremation burial in which the family hadn't made up their mind how they were going to handle the situation and kept the remains for a while. And then at some point decide to do a burial at the cemetery where the funeral home's already out of the picture. And so they, they're paying the cemetery, the grave digger directly.
I understand that I had to go through that process in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, I would, I would go along with that, Madam Chair.
Okay, so you're making the motion to allow the cemetery trustees to bring forward a formal recommendation? I would agree with that.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
I, I would agree with that. So second, could I have a roll call vote on that?
Eric, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Onto the FEMA hazard mitigation opportunities. Looks like we're being asked to evaluate how to proceed with the culverts by, let me just go through the details, by considering engaging an engineer to finalize the applications for the FEMA hazard mitigation funding for the Lakeside Oaks Drive culvert replacement project. Have I got that right, TA McGyver?
Yes.
Do I have any questions, comments, concerns? I saw, select person Bailey, is your hand still up from last time?
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, select person Eric.
Um, just to make the board aware, Lee Boyes King already did a rough estimate on Pond Hill, $1.3 million roughly. So this could be a future expense to town taxpayers if it's not funded.
So, so in saying that, are you saying we should go ahead with the FEMA hazard mitigation funding application?
Yeah, I'm just making the board aware that falls through, we're setting the town up for a $1.3 million impact.
And to be clear, the, we're requesting to delay the pursuit of the Pond Hill and Daniel Cader culvert improvements until next year's funding opportunity with FEMA. This year, we'd like to simply focus on the Lakeside Oaks Drive FEMA opportunity. And the request is we need an engineer to finalize the cost benefit analysis. We estimate it'll cost about 5,000, certainly less than 10,000. But the, the deadline is the end of November. So we need to engage those folks. Fortunately, if it's not, if the funding is not approved by FEMA, that work by the engineer won't be for naught because it's, it's engineering work which will be required anyways for the replacement project. So it'll just be getting that taken care of prior to the funding application.
Okay. Do I have any more questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I would make a motion to expend between 5,000 and 10,000 on an engineer to finalize application for the FEMA mitigation funding. Does that require a waiver of the RFP process, TA McGyver?
No, the bid process kicks in after $10,000.
Very good.
I will be transparent with the board. So the, the last time the town was successful in pursuing this funding opportunity, the town contracted with Hoyle Tanner Associates on the Young Road box culvert improvement. And that decision was made at the time because the, they were an engineering consultant and the only one that put in that had experience navigating this specific funding opportunity. I, I would absolutely be reaching out to Hoyle and Tanner to put in a proposal. We'd certainly seek other engineering consultants to put in a proposal as well. But I suspect in conversations with other communities that have pursued this funding, that Hoyle and Tanner would, would continue to be a frontrunner. So I know that the board has had concerns with Hoyle and Tanner in the past. I just want to be transparent that they, they will be on the shortlist to, to perform this work for the town, given their experience with the funding opportunity.
Thank you for that transparency. Go ahead, select person Eric.
How are we coming along with the engineers in town in the, what's out of committee and stuff like that? Is there any way to get working on that?
So can I push that past this? I've made a motion.
This, but you, you were just stated, well, you go right to one engineer.
Well, no, he, what he stated was that he expects that when this goes out for a proposal that we will get likely just the one firm responding because of their FEMA hazard mitigation experience. That's what he stated. But there's a motion and now we're having further discussions. So for point of order, is there a second to the motion? Seeing as there's no second to the motion, I'll continue to open this up for discussion.
I'll answer select person Eric's question. So Dan is a member of the committee. We're actually waiting for you. You had said that you didn't think you'd have time to meet until November. I, I had sent out to the committee the, the last request for qualifications, that documentation, so members of the committee could begin reviewing that documentation and, and making suggestions. But I had delayed getting the group together to meet because you said your work was very busy and you couldn't meet until November. If your work schedule is updated, I'd be happy to get a meeting together sooner.
Go ahead, select person Eric.
I'm just an alternate. Andy's the main member.
You're both full members.
Okay, so we had a failure of the first motion. I'm gonna move on to the next issue if I don't get a motion.
Point of order?
Go ahead, sir.
No, did we have a vote on the first motion?
No, we had no second on the first motion.
Okay, thank you very much. The reason I did that is it, it's immaterial. It's, sorry.
So seeing as there's no second, we will not be making a decision on the FEMA hazard mitigation process?
So that the town is not interested in pursuing this possible funding mechanism for the work that they previously agreed to on the Lakeside Oak culvert improvements?
Is that correct, board?
Well, so here's my general, sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I voted no on Lakeside Oaks Drive, so I fully support the idea of pursuing FEMA on Pond Hill and Daniel Cader. But since I voted no on Lakeside Oaks, I'm not in support of that aspect of it.
So the board agreed to do it. And, and again, I just want to make sure that it's clear. If the board doesn't want to pursue this funding, I'm happy to move on and, and, you know, quite frankly, it'll save us time putting the application materials together before November. But I think that this is a likely possible funding source for this project, which would mitigate the impact to local taxpayers. So Vice Chair Knapp, you know, I, I think even if you were in disagreement with the project, I think finding alternative funding would be a, a way that would make you more amenable to the project. But again, I'm happy to proceed as however the board decides.
It does. I agree with you on that, that if we can find someone else to pay for it, I'm, we're spending $5,000 to, on a project I don't agree with, which is less than what the culvert replacement end of it will be. But, yeah, I don't know. I'm, I, so there's, I will second the motion reluctantly on it. Just because I, I don't want to, my objective is not to handicap losing out on possible funds, but I would like to make it very clearly stated, I do not support the Lakeside Oak culvert replacement since it is, and it is not our responsibility to maintain it.
Very good. I need a roll call vote, please, beginning with select person Eric. Okay, select person Bailey.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Knapp, aye. And select person Sakosha.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you all. Request to purchase MAP 234 lot 1, sub lot 6. Is the board interested in considering any interest in selling MAP 234 lot 1, sub lot 6?
Where is that located?
End of Redemption Road.
I, I have a question. Have we offered this to the current commercial business that is on that property?
No.
Okay, have, have they expressed interest in it?
They had previously conceptually expressed interest when they were pursuing an expansion project on what's now the American Legion Lot, in what lots were available and, and what opportunity to expand in that area. Ultimately, the town retained that lot for future use by the town. And the business on that road proceeded with purchasing three lots, the American Legion Lot and two other lots as part of the subdivision towards their expansion project.
And what was the town retaining this sub lot 6 for?
The, the only specific purpose the town has retained the lot is for future recreation use. That was what it was billed as when the subdivision was first, or the development agreement was first made. And most recently, that was the conversation. The Recreation Department has no specific plans to develop that lot. But, you know, last year when the board discussed it, they still felt like it was a valuable opportunity to, to keep available for future use of the town.
Okay, select person Eric, you had your hand up first.
Oh, Tracy, sorry to interrupt. I actually had my hand up first.
Sorry, select person Knapp, Vice Chair.
I'm just, I'm raising my, please, everybody, I'm just raising my hand to make it known that since I work for the employer that abuts this and this would be a, an item of concern, I am abstaining from this process.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, select person Eric.
All right. I am very shocked that the butters was not notified about another, someone interested in it. Because I'm not taking sides. But that certain business in town spent a lot of money into structure. At any given time, they can ask the town to take over Redemption Drive for maintenance and stuff. So that'll be a burden. And there has been, there should be some talk between the town and Terrible Camp before anything happens. I'm not taking sides, but this should have been a bit of talk. This shouldn't have been done before even in front of me to take a vote. That's my personal feeling.
Okay, select person Bailey.
Yes, I, I, I have a concern that, you know, that we had asked the rec commission if they wanted to turn around and have that assigned to them so they could use it. And if their comment was, well, we would just like to have it for future consideration, then I would have to say to you that future consideration would, would better the town if we could put it back on the tax rolls.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what, what I'm hearing from the select board at this time is that as opposed to making a decision about this, you would like to approach the butters, ask if there's interest in the property before making the decision to sell to the other interested party, correct?
Yes.
The butters, including Marion, Terrible Camp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I'm also hearing that it is important for you to explore whether there is a solid plan with the strategic plan that is possessed by the rec department for usage of this property, correct?
That's it. Got all our eyes.
The rec department is out as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Would it, would it be who of us to have the conversation to be sure their strategic plan does not include this property?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay. So what, TA McGyver, could we direct you to do those two things and then we'll bring this back up again at a future meeting?
Absolutely. I just want to make it clear that I don't believe the rec department or rec commission ever specifically requested that lot. I think that during the original development agreement for that property, the, the town had kind of earmarked that lot for future recreation use. So I, I don't think, I don't think it's a failure on the Recreation Department or Commission's side for not ever developing a formalized plan for that property. But I can tell you that their strategic plan, as recently as six months ago, did not include development of that lot. But I'll absolutely ask for an update, in addition to reaching out to the butters to discuss the sale of the property by the town.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the request to purchase a portion of MAP 224 lot 10. As you know, the individual, Michael Flaherty of 302 Smoke Street has written to the town and asked to purchase a portion of the MAP 224 lot 10 for the purchase price of $2,000 for one acre. Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
I'm just making it known that I'm rejoined board at this time.
Okay.
And, well, since I'm, I'm back, I will also say that I am much like the other one. I'm not in support of selling a portion of a lot for $2,000. I think the value of a one acre lot is worth way more than that in town. Thank you.
Okay, so I think the, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I turned around and reading the Flattery's Letter. I did pronounce that correctly, I hope. And, you know, and they're looking to put a pool in out there and what have you. And if you look at their property, they're, they're, they sent us just this little map right here with it here and the pool would go here. And what, what I did was I tried to find a map that showed their house on the house lot. But currently, the way this one is because it's, you've got 70.1, you've got 70.0, which they own. And if you look at the property and the way, way it is, there seems to be ample room on the driveway side or the other side. And they could turn around and come off the back porch either way so they could have plenty of room. I don't think selling that property is the way to go either. I, I, I can't, I can't approve that.
Okay, select person Eric.
The town lands doesn't support the price and they don't want the town to set precedent.
What do you mean by that, please?
When someone gets an adje on their own land, go to the butter and buy a little bit of land. So everyone in town wants to do something, we'll get, set precedent like that, allowing this.
Okay, I understand. So at this time, I'm going to ask, is there anyone on the select board that would like to make a motion to allow for the sale of the one acre from MAP 224 lot 10? And in the absence of a motion, I think we'll have an answer. I'm gonna give it 30 seconds. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Chair Hardikoff, one thing I'll add, while you wait that 30 seconds, during the planning board review, the building inspector pointed out an interesting piece of information, which is that the, the lot is, was a lot of record prior to the current wetland buffer setbacks. And so expanding that lot would bring that requirement current, meaning that the buffer, the wetland buffer setbacks that currently don't apply to that lot would if it expanded. And the, the wetlands, there's a plan that shows wetlands on the town portion of the lot, which may actually restrict the, the ability to put an in-ground pool in that lot more if it were expanded. Whereas currently, a pool may be able to be placed on the lot if zoning board relief is received. If the lot is expanded because of the wetland buffer setback, the planning board would need to review a waiver of the wetland buffer setback.
Okay, making it more difficult. I understand. Okay, select person Bailey, I think you have your hand up just by accident. Is that true?
Oh, that's, I, I, I tell you, this new, this new instructions we received, difficult to get a handle on, but I'll get my hand around it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you all. In the absence of a motion, I, in the absence of a motion, I am going to then understand that the select board is choosing to not consider this request. Thank you all very much. Could I please move to select person reports, beginning with select person Eric on their Thank you all very much. Could I please move to select person reports, beginning with select person air on their committee participation?
So Town Lands, I was, they know I attend this, but they met at Gary Drive Homestead. And they started going to previewing and stuff and doing their homework. And they, I did talk to the chair and they got a couple of questions. We, there's still, the power meter is still on at the house. That's abandoned over there. Field's old house. So I don't want the town to get a bill. We own it now. And then, but they decided the paperwork's a long process. Then at the conservation, I just got an email today. We have a couple of alternates and then maybe a full member coming aboard. So they'll be coming in front of us. It looks pretty positive with the conservation.
Excellent.
Basically, too, the tiny library can get the approvals on, put from, put on abandoned pole and stuff. And I kept the young girl in the loop on everything and too. But it's really hard to deal consolidated and stuff. They get their approvals. Her project impressed the telephone company. They sent an email. So I said, just don't, you can press the telephone company. That's pretty good. And then basically, we went over the MOU and stuff. We'll be coming to back of the board eventually on the MOU. And to nothing major. Don't get riled up yet. So we're just talking and stuff. And then to the Cast Rock Association came into the to to the engineers and I am a butter over there, so I abstain from any talk on it. And then we're talking about the stewardship and stuff, looking in the conservation stuff and how that's established proper funding and everything. And we're really taking this serious luck and everything. So be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay. Select person Bailey, a report out, please.
Thank you very much. I just to let everybody know I have a library on Tuesday. I have ZBA on Wednesday. ZBA has quite a few cases to come forward and there's action on one of the islands for for billing permit, what have you, which could lead or would lead, I should say, to further use of an attorney, but we'll find out what happens on Wednesday. My concern again is that I can have a concern, correct, Madam Chair?
Yes.
My my concern is with the restaurants in town that have pickup for food. And I asked the question of one of them if they were encouraging individuals to wear a mask when they walk in there. And they, comments that I received was that it was up to the individual to do it. So I I don't know what the rules are with the state as far as going in, picking up food, not wearing a mask, but it is a concern of mine because, well, you know who I am. So it's just, I I just don't want to catch anything. So that's just my concern.
I think our health officer, John Hawkins, is on here. Does, John, do you want to speak to the restaurant mask issue? John, you'd have to hit star six on your phone to be able to speak.
I was actually on the computer and I was trying to get the mic to come up.
Oh, sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. As far as that stuff goes, there's been some conversations to where because it's a governor's mandate, the only ones that have authority to enforce any of them rules is the state police. We don't have the authority at a town level to do so. So the governor would have to authorize the state police to do it.
All right, John, I appreciate that.
Okay, I I think we, I I I highly recommend, highly recommend, as we're seeing a resurgence of COVID, that you practice three W's, folks. Watch your distance, wear your mask, wash your hands. It's not just about you. It's about all the rest of Barrington. But that's just my own personal comment today, folks.
I would take that to be mine too. Thank you.
Yes. Vice Chair Napp, can you do a report out for your committees?
I can. So Planning Board, I was not able to attend last week, unfortunately. But I did send my comments on each of the cases in. We had a technology committee last week where we reviewed all kinds of different things, everything from municipal broadband to a handful of other items. And then today, we had a meeting with Atlantic Broadband where they talked about their fiber node and how they're doing fiber to the home, but they've been adding extra nodes where necessary. They talked about how they focus on their planned development with the nodes, where when they start looking at being at 60% capacity, they build a plan for it so that if by time they get to 80% capacity, they've already prepared for that. They apologized for the call volume issues. They have they are they are spread out from New Hampshire to Florida. And they are, said they were looking at adding a third-party company, but couldn't confirm that they had added a third-party company to assist with the call volume. There were a handful of other kind of miscellaneous items that were covered in there. But I relevant it is to get into all the details on that. They they did give us a person who is going to be kind of the focal point for the town. And there were some takeaway meeting with them updating their used to be a complaint form. We're talking about it being a kind of a service feedback form. We've requested, we've got a request for service record data with them if needed. And looking at the fiber loop for the town hall to the highway department, to the library, to PD. So we create some redundancy in that loop as well. In a very loose way, kind of covers the general crux of what was a 30-minute meeting turned hour meeting.
Very good. Select Supersha, report out of your committees, please.
Okay, so for the Rec Department, I've been working with Sarah as she's Jesse's intern. The update on the Barrington rec expansion is they're thinking with how late it is right now with the construction. It might not be done till spring. But there's a couple of other things that are going on. The builder had originally priced them at, okay, if we're doing the town hall at the same time, we could save some costs as far as supervising and so that hasn't happened. So the price has gone up a little bit and also the price of building material is up. So with their commission board recommendation, they're probably going to hold off till spring and see where this COVID trail takes everybody and see what we can do then.
Understood. Very good. Any other report outs? I will do my, can I do my report out first, Dan? So I participated in the Advisory Budget Committee meeting. Excellent questions asked. I love the process of bringing the questions to the department heads and then having answers for the select board because I think it provides a large amount of transparency in the budget process. I did not make it to the transfer station committee meeting because I, my professional life interfered. But I do understand the discussion was surrounding the potential for sticker usage. I don't think anything's been decided, but I do know that that group, that committee is doing an excellent job in evaluating what needs to happen at the transfer station as the town grows and in order to align the services appropriately for the times that we live in. Go ahead, select person, air.
The Jim forgot a very important thing about the rec. Saturday, the 24th is trunk a tree. I'll be there.
Okay, and families do need to sign.
My apologies.
Yep, and families do need to sign up for times through the Rec Department. It is not just a show up event this year. Am I understanding that correctly, everyone? Very good. Okay, moving on to the second public comment, 15 minutes, maximum of three minutes per person. If you would like to speak, you have a few opportunities. Please mouse over your screen and press your hand up button and we'll know that you'd like to speak. Your other option is to call 664-0146 if we're not able to hear you. Or you can unmute your phones by pressing star six and alert us to the fact that you would like to speak during public comment. 15 minutes, three minutes per person. I'm going to give it 30 seconds to see if anyone would like to speak during this portion of public comment. While we're waiting on that, I will thank the select board members for once again, a riveting productive meeting because you've been on here now almost three hours and I know we're paying you the big bucks for your volunteer elect service to the town.
Oh, it's a big tax break, right?
Huge, huge. We've hit 30 seconds. So at this point, I assume we will adjourn the select board meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night, all.